What's up, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Call to order, Town of Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, June 8, 2023. Before I begin, I just want to announce for the record, we have a couple items that are not going to go forward today during our public hearing session, and that is number nine. That is 785 Riverside Drive, as well as number thirteen, which is 309 Union Avenue. So I have a couple other items on our initial agenda for our working session. The first is approval of the minutes from Thursday, May 4, 2023. Entertain a motion to approve. Someone make it there, sir, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, bring to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? None, the motion carries. Second is approval of secretary's fees. Entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Terry, is there a second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane. Harold, you've got to move fast in these meetings when you want a second or move something, right? All right, any discussion? Hearing none, bring it to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? None, that motion carries. We'll be reconvening our working session after the completion of the public hearing. We're going to start the public hearing, assuming they're close, is right? Yes, it is right. We'll start the public hearing in five minutes. And again, no business on 785 Riverside Drive and 309 Union Avenue today. Those are going to be taken up in July. Call to order, Town of Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, this is our public hearing for June 8, 2023. When I call a matter to go forward, I'm going to give a call. It's going to be a description. It's going to be the address, the applicant, and the basic description of what you want to do. During that time, stay in your seat. Don't try to hand me stuff. Don't try to hand any board member stuff. It's very important. When I'm done, you go up to the podium, give your name and address. It's for the record, we know who you are, okay? You'll all know the people that are presenting, because I've written down a little cheat sheet of whether it's the owner or whether it's one of your agents, an attorney, or someone that you've hired to help you with this. So I'll know, but it has to get down, it's being recorded. You saw Mr. Decker hit resume and record. So please don't interrupt that part of it. I'm going to give everyone an opportunity to talk. My second point goes to what I just said, but I will allow the applicant or his agent to go first, then I'm going to open it up to anyone that has a comment about this particular application, that application only. I first say, are you in favor of it? Anyone in favor, come up and speak. Then I'll ask if there's anyone that opposes it, and give them an opportunity to come up and speak. If there's opposition, and only if there's opposition, I will then allow the applicant to get up and rebut the opposition. At that time, it's only to rebut the opposition and not to restate your entire application, okay? So I try to make this smooth, because we have long hearings here, and I want to make it efficient for everyone. I will give everyone an opportunity to speak, but I like to try to follow that order, okay? Second, why I emphasize certain things in the first comment, it's being taped, and that's required by state law. So if there's an issue or a question about this, I want the tape and the recording to be very clear. So only one person can speak at a time, and anyone who does speak must come up to the microphone, to put in a microphone. Don't worry, people that are coming in remote, I'm going to give you an opportunity as well. You've got to let us know. Raise your hand, somehow let us know if you need to speak or need to comment. I'm going to make sure everyone has an opportunity. I'll pause and allow for anyone that's here to let me know, or if there's anyone that's remote signing in to let me know as well, okay? Remember, what this zoning board does, we're a zoning board of appeals, so there are certain regulations that are put in place by our fellow board, the Planning and Zoning Commission, which are the rules, okay? And you guys are asking us to bend those rules, all right, for a variance, or certain requests, or relief from the particular rules that apply to each of the properties in Fairfield. So we're here to entertain that, and to whether this particular piece of property and what you want to do fits with our zoning regs, and whether we should allow some forgiveness of those as it relates to that particular piece of property. So your comments, whether they're in favor of it or against it, should keep that in mind, because if you go too far off the point, I'm going to reserve my right as chairman to restrict your comments at any time. Third, we're going to have the public hearing go through all the matters that are here. I mentioned already that we have a couple continued matters. And once we're finished with the public hearing, we'll probably take a little break, and then we're going to reconvene in our working session, where the five of us are going to decide on each matter that goes forward today. And we're going to be voting in favor or against a particular variance request. You need a super majority to have your variance granted, okay? So that means you need four out of five to vote in favor of it. If it's a simple majority, three to two, your request is going to unfortunately be denied. I let people know that you're welcome to stay. It's our working session. Some people call it executive session, I don't think that's right. It's a working session, and we're discussing each application. So if you can't stay, there's no penalty, all right? Don't worry, we're not going to, I'm not taking notes on someone leaving class early. But if you can stay, and if you can't stay on remotely, it's very important, because if there's discussion, and you don't get the result that you want, whether you're in favor of it, whether you're the applicant, obviously you're in favor of it, or whether you're in opposition, you may hear some comments as to why we decided the way we did. I think that's helpful. Now, if you can't stay, and that's fine, you can call zoning office tomorrow and find out what happened. And you can even ask them, and I'm sure, because their staff is great, that they will tell you some of the reasons and some of the discussion that took place, if you have some questions, all right? But if you can stay, it's great for you. It's good for you. I think it's important also, you learn how this board works. And if an application for waiver is granted, it will not be valid unless there's a recording that goes on the land records. And you must make out a check, $60 payable to the town of Fairfield, and bring it or send it to the zoning office Wednesday or later for a proper recording. Any waiver that involves construction, whether it's a new dwelling, an addition, or an alteration of that building, will require an ASVIL before any issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance and/or a certificate of occupancy. So our first matter, and I think there was some lenience by Attorney Fallon, I think you were allowed the other matter to go before you on that, is that okay, of number seven?
I didn't know about it, but I'm absolutely fine with it.
All right, okay, thank you. Taking a little out of order, we don't normally do this, but we know sometimes the scheduling, especially when we change for our summer hours, can be a little bit difficult, and thank you Attorney Fallon for accommodating that request. So we're going to take a little bit out of order, and then we'll reconvene back to our order that's been printed on the agenda. It's number seven, 223 Dorine Drive, map 177, parcel 39, petition of Ryan and Dana Fermander for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the side and sum of two sideline setbacks from seven feet and 25 feet, currently 4.9 feet and 14.2 feet, proposing 3.8 feet and 13.1 feet, permission to construct two-story, second-floor addition premises A zone.
Good afternoon, we are remote. Thank you for accommodating us going first, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you also for meeting with us today, Dana and Ryan Fermander. We reside at 223 Dorine Drive in Fairfield. We purchased our home last June, June 22, 2022, and it's just been the most incredible year for our family. Our two children have enjoyed being able to walk a very close distance to both their cousins' houses, and they've transitioned to Fairfield Schools beautifully, and have made a tremendous amount of new friends, as have my husband and I. So we thank the incredible community for welcoming us here. Today, we are here because we are seeking to add a second-story addition to our current one-level house to fit the needs of our family of four. Though we are only building above our existing structure, we are kindly requesting a variance of the zoning regulations to extend our driveway and garage. We are requesting to reduce the side and sum of the two sideline setbacks. It currently is 4.9 feet and 14.2 feet, and we are requesting or proposing 3.8 feet and 13.1 feet. We can confidently report that our neighbors are in full support of this, and we promise to bring life and love to our home and neighborhood for many years to come, and we thank you so much for your support and consideration of this variance.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Mrs. Fermander?
I have one question.
Yes, go ahead, Harold.
Hello, I noticed that your home faces or backs up to a river, and I was wondering if there are any wetland considerations or any issues with conservation that you are aware of?
Not that we are aware of. We do have a draft approval through the Wetlands Department already.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application? This is 223 Dorine Drive. Is there anyone in opposition to the application? All right, hearing no other comments, we're going to close the hearing on 223 Dorine Drive. Thank you, Mrs. Fermander.
Thank you.
All right, back to the regular schedule, and our first item is on the continued docket, it's number five, 680 Old Academy Road, map 171, parcel 9A, as in Apple, petition of Amity Wiley LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 2.7 and 5.2.1, to reduce the lot frontage from 200 feet, proposing zero feet, permission to reestablish a separate rear building lot, premises AAA zone. Attorney Fallon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I am pleased to be here representing the applicant. The parties in interest to that LLC are Dennis and Claire Nacotra. They are seated in the front row, right here with us. They are longtime residents of Fairfield. They recently sold their home on Mine Hill, and that does kind of tie into what I want to talk to you about today. The property is located at 680 Congress Street. It's in the Residence AAA Zoning District. It comprises 281,734 square feet. Or, said another way, 6.47 acres. Prior to June of 2020, 2003, it consisted of two separate parcels, both legal building lots, compliant with all of the provisions of the zoning regulations then in effect. As shown on a map that I've provided to you entitled "Proposed Lot Consolidation Map", dated June 9, 2003, these parcels at that time consisted of what's noted as tax parcel 11A and 9A. The parcel 11A, which was taxed for many, many, many decades as a buildable lot, was a rear lot and legally permitted under the then-existing zoning regulations. On June 12, 2003, the then-owner, Gaysa Bodnar, filed the previously referenced lot consolidation map on the land records. That would be map number 6919. It's not known why that action was taken. One can speculate it was involving tax considerations, but we simply don't know. But what we do know is that it did result in the merger of these two legal parcels into a single 6.47-acre tract. Unforeseen, perhaps by Mr. Bodnar, subsequently, after those parcels were merged, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission amended the zoning regulations to prohibit rear lots in the residential zones, including the AAA zone. Now presently, then and presently located on the property, obviously on the lot designated 9A, there's a sizable, single-family residential dwelling of some 8,000 square feet. I'd like to point out, and I think it's been commented on by letters that you have received that I will refer to, that the Nacotras have done unbelievable work since acquiring the property some months ago, in terms of restoring this piece of property to the benefit of the entire neighborhood. And I think the neighbors, speaking for themselves in the letters you've received, are very, very appreciative of that. The structure that was located on the previously designated lot 11A is also a very interesting structure. Mr. Bodnar was a car collector, as one might expect, since he owned, I think, the Mercedes-Benz dealership in town for many years. So he built one of the largest garages you will ever see, and that is the structure that's there now. On the second floor of that structure, there is actually a residential dwelling, fairly sizable, almost, I think, 2,200 square feet, that was used by a prior owner for many, many years, prior to selling the property to the Nacotras. Now, what we propose, and will address today, is a request to resubdivide, if you will, the property, in order to establish as a legal building lot, the parcel previously referenced as tax parcel 11A on that consolidation map, and noted on the restored parcel, or the loaded on the other map, the subdivision map that I also gave you a property of, as the restored parcel. The lot to be restored, which was a lot for many decades prior to 2003, will have a gross area of 88,398 square feet. It will be fully compliant with all provisions of the zoning regulations, as obviously will the other remaining parcel. In order to facilitate the resubdivision of the property, and the re-establishment of the restored parcel as a legal building lot, as it had existed for many decades prior to the map being recorded in 2003, we're seeking two variances. A variance of section 2.7, to permit a rear lot, as currently defined in section 31.2.28, which was permitted until the zoning regulations changed, and a variance of section 5.2.1, with regard to frontage on a public street, because if you're a rear lot, you don't have frontage on the public street. So let's examine the legal underpinnings here. As you know, under Connecticut General Statute 8.6A3, you have to make two findings, that the variance does not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan, and there are factors in the matter that establish legal hardship, as recognized by our case law. Let me start with the first point. There's not going to be any negative effect on the comprehensive zoning plan, as the lot will be utilized for a single-family residence, as is exactly permitted in the zone. The Egan case, which I cite in my material, stands for the proposition that if the use to be allowed under a variance is consistent with other uses in the area and/or as a permitted use, then the first part of the test is met. In addition, the lot to be reestablished will have a gross lot area of 88,398 square feet, so it will comply in all respects with the provisions of the zoning regulations. Now, Mr. and Mrs. Nacotra went for the entire neighborhood and addressed these questions with their neighbors, made them aware of what they wanted to do. You have these letters, at least in electronic form, but I will provide them to you, so they are handy. Again, these are the letters I referred to earlier. Obviously, I'm not going to read them to you, but among the other things that they, the points that they make are, number one, their appreciation for the significant restorative work that the Nacotras have done since acquiring the property, and also the fact property in question would benefit from the resubdivision that we proposed, which they feel would be consistent with all aspects of the neighborhood. We also had dialogue constructive and neighborly with Mr. Ravis, who is also an a buddy neighbor. You've recently received both electronic copies, and I believe hard copies, of a letter from Attorney Joel Green. I made copies for you too, but you already have the copies, thanks to Jody's efficiency. So, Mr. Green and I, Mr. Green has obviously asked me to deliver this letter, he's already provided to you, but basically, as you can see reading the letter, Mr. Ravis supports this application, and he supports it subject to the impositions of conditions that we have agreed to relative to the matter. And I will just state those for the record. They are stated as numbers one, two, and three in his letter. One, the premises at 680 Old Academy Road are used for a single-family residence and accessory garage structure, as shown on the plans, supporting the application. Two, that no additional structures of any kind shall be constructed on the subject property, that would be the restored lot. Number three, the existing structure upon the subject property may be repaired and/or replaced, but no repair or replacement shall result in the expansion or enlargement of the structure, including, but not limited to, any increase in the building coverage or building height as defined in the zoning regulations. We support and concur with these conditions, and would ask that they be made conditions of approval. Now, interestingly enough, and I think this may be good news for everybody, you did receive a letter, I'm not sure what the date of the letter was, but it was from Mr. and Mrs. Faith of 1514 Hillside Road. The Nacotras made numerous efforts, and did in fact have numerous conversations with the Faith in the spirit that they approached this matter in terms of neighborliness. Obviously, the Nacotras would like very much to utilize the dwelling that's already located on the lot to be divided, to be used as their seasonal residence. Mr. Nacotra, coincidentally, is also a car collector, so this had some unique appeal to him in terms of the driveway. The Faith letter, I won't read to you either, but the fourth paragraph, I think, is the good news. Their concerns, as expressed in that letter some months ago, were as follows. Granting these variances would allow the current owner or his successor entitled to build a new house on the property, meaning the newly created lot, where the current garage presently stands. Under our current zoning regulations, such a residence could be as much as three stories or 40 feet in height. Worse yet, such a building would be permitted as of right. This would negatively impact our view and impair the character of our neighborhood. So not to speak for the Faith, but I think what they're saying is, hey, we like the status quo, thank you very much, and maybe they can send Mr. Ravis a bottle of his favorite champagne, because I think he has addressed their concern, because the conditions that we ask you to impose, based upon our agreement with Mr. Ravis, will not allow the circumstance that the Faith were indicating concern about to occur, because what the condition will ensure is that the building that is there now, the structure, is the only building that can be on that property if you grant this variance application, and that building cannot be enlarged or modified in any way. The reason I think that's a substantial benefit for everyone is as follows. If the variance applications here are denied, and this remains a single 6.47-acre parcel, then under our current zoning regulations, that garage/residence could be demolished, and under our current zoning regulations, an accessory structure of up to 4,000 square feet could be built, because the zoning regulations provide that an accessory structure cannot exceed 50% of the height of the square footage of the main dwelling. And the main dwelling here is over 8,000 square feet. And under the recently adopted regulations by the Planning and Zoning Commission, that 4,000-square-feet accessory structure could have an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit of 1,500 square feet. So if the goal here is apropos of the letter you received from the Faith, to preserve the status quo, then we've addressed that through the conditions that we've agreed to with Mr. Ravis, and in fact, we've addressed the fundamental concern that Mr. Faith shared with you in that letter. And we hope he's aware of that, or soon will be, because I would only believe, based upon his letter, that this will provide him great satisfaction and relief. And we're comfortable with it, because we want to use the restored lot for the purposes of maintaining that structure as a garage and as a residence on a seasonal basis, perhaps, for the Nacotras. So that's my position on why we satisfy the first part of the test. The second part of the test is easy, because if this comes up, there are a lot of cases that deal with this very situation, from the context of what constitutes hardship. You all know the hardship criteria here, and the case law that I cite to you, the Scancunna case, Petrucci-Nelson, all arise out of situations where an amendment to the zoning regulations renders a property to be nonconforming, or, as the cases refer to them, as tantamount to a practical confiscation of the rights of the property owners with respect to the use and enjoyment of the property in question. We had this same situation, you may remember, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, involving an identical situation in Southport, where, for whatever reason, a prior owner merged a lot. The lot was a legal lot, because it was a nonconforming, it was a rear lot, which was allowed at the time, the regs changed, rendering the lot no longer legal. The authority, I think, that I cite in my material, obviously, is applicable to this situation. The lot that we seek to restore was maintained for many, many decades as a building lot, and was consistently taxed as such by the town up to the time of the recording of the consolidation map in 2003. The application of the subsequent amended regulations now deprives my client of the opportunity to utilize the parcel with the structure that is on it now, and nothing more, as a dwelling lot, and notwithstanding the fact that it was to be reestablished, will comply in all respects with the zoning regulations, including lot area. This is the same fact that we find in these cases, where the court has said that satisfies the hardship requirement. But here, it's even more compelling for the reasons I said before, and that is the particular facts where this structure is here, the condition that we ask you to impose will ensure that no other structure can be built, and that structure can't be enlarged, and the alternative, if we don't get the variance, would be simply that the Nacotras, or somebody they sell the entire property to, could turn around and build a 4,000-square-foot accessory structure with a 15- or 2,000-square-foot ADU accessory dwelling unit. And that makes no sense for nobody at all. So in summary, the request to resubdivide this significantly oversized parcel, to reestablish the two compliant lots that previously existed in accordance with the regs prior to 2003, I believe is consistent with the standards I've reviewed pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8.6. The resubdivision of the parcel to reestablish the previously existing building lots will not have any adverse effect on the surrounding neighborhood. You have letters to that effect, and now with the conditions that we seek you to impose in accordance with our agreement with Mr. Ravis, that is even more significantly assured, especially when you consider what other as-of-right options could be exercised by way of accessory structure construction, if the lot were not resubdivided, with the condition that we're seeking to impose. So we hope that you will consider the application and approve it. I think it's a win-win. I think the neighbors are excited about it, because, one, they appreciate the work, which is so considerable, that Dennis and Claire have done on the property, but number two, they do all like the status quo. They like that structure that's there now, they think it fits well in the neighborhood, and that will be preserved in perpetuity if you grant the variance, based upon the condition of the zoning variance that would then run with the land. As an alternative to leaving the property subject to more intense development, worth sold as a single parcel. So be pleased to answer any questions that you might have, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Any questions, Attorney Fallon, at 680 Old Academy Road?
Hi. So the residence that's currently now above the garage in the back, is that now classified as an ADU?
No.
What is it?
At best we can tell, it was just something that was constructed and occupied by the prior owner, so it does not have the legal status of a residence. But as I said, if you approve the variance, then it can be a residence, and if you don't approve the variance, then it can be approved administratively as an ADU, or it can be demolished, a much larger accessory structure incorporating an ADU could be constructed.
I'm going to ask Mr. Decker later, whether that accessory building then can also have an ADU, that's really different addresses than on the same property that? also have an ADU, that three different addresses on the same property is that?
No, it could. In other words, let's take the two scenarios. If you grant the variance so that we can reestablish the lot, then the engineering department will assign a new number to what's now the garage. Okay? If, on the other hand, you don't grant the variance, please, please, go through this, then the accessory structure can be built, the ADU can be constructed in either that structure or a much larger structure, and once the ADU is permitted, the engineering department will assign a new address for emergency purposes to the accessory dwelling unit. So, it ends up the same. The big difference for the neighborhood is if you grant the variance, they're assured with the conditions that we suggest, the structure that's there is the only structure that will be there and it will not be enlarged, whereas if the variance isn't granted, and time passes and the Nocotras sell the property, whatever, then they could tear down that garage and build a big, big, big accessory structure and still put an ADU in there.
That's the, okay, I didn't understand. And so currently, are there separate utilities for each structure, there's separate setbacks?
There is, yeah. It's all, yeah, we kind of reviewed all that before we got into this with the Health Department, and the answer is yes.
And what is the, I can't read the dimensions there, what's the current frontage on Old Academy Road, what is that?
I don't have it in front of me, but it's substantial.
Does it mean?
Oh, yeah.
For the existing house?
Yes.
That has the right?
Oh, yeah, because it's over six acres, it's six point four seven acres.
But the cup, just that, it's where it attaches to the road?
Right, it has the frontage.
It has that frontage.
We wouldn't be creating any nonconformity.
Okay, right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Attorney Fallon, I know you said this a few times, I just want to, belt and suspenders, I guess. And I appreciate always, and as you know, the board always appreciates when the applicants work with neighbors to come up with a solution. So, these three things, your clients are fine with it to be conditioned as stated in Attorney Green's letter.
Correct. My clients have a copy of the letter, they've reviewed it, and the answer is yes.
Okay, okay. I think that delves into some of the questions that Jane was asking, obviously. The condition kind of removes some of that.
Correct.
What Jane's asking.
Yes, I mean, what we have here now is, that's right, you couldn't, the structure that's here now will have to remain unenlarged. I mean, if it were destroyed by fire or damaged, it could be rebuilt, as Attorney Green's conditions indicate, but it couldn't be expanded.
Okay, any other questions? All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? And I know you put in for the record the letters, the four letters, the ads, and various people, and then in favor with conditions, obviously Attorney Green's letter from Mr. Ravis, on behalf of Mr. Ravis. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone virtually, remote? Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone virtually, remote, in opposition, 680 Old Academy? All right, thank you. I'm going to close the hearing. 680 Old Academy. Next item, general docket number one, 1857 Hillside Road, map 171, parcel 43, petition of Bruno N. Maravellis for variance of zoning regulations section 5.2.4, to reduce the sideline setback from thirty feet, currently twenty one point four feet, proposing eighteen point seven feet. Permission to construct a rear two-story addition premises AAA zone. Is that remote or here? Okay, go ahead. No one usually listens to my opening remarks, stay there while I'm talking, you know, you'd surprise them.
You got it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Bruno Maravellis of 1857 Hillside Road. We are looking to reduce the sideline setback from thirty feet, which is currently twenty one point four, we're proposing eighteen point seven, to construct a two-story addition in the rear. The home is currently a two-bedroom residence, we're looking to add a bedroom in the back to accommodate our family. It's currently a nonconforming lot. As you can see on the map, it's nonconforming, and we have wetlands, we're not encroaching on those wetland setbacks. We're putting more of the, we're building more within the buildable area than the house currently is, and as much as we can. So, the rest of that just follows the lines of existing residents. So, thank you for your consideration.
All right, board have any questions for Mr. Maravellis?
Sorry, you're adding a bedroom, that's an accessory subject?
It is not, the subject is set up for three bedrooms.
Any other questions? All right, so anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, 1857 Hillside Is there anyone in opposition to the application, 1857 Hillside Road? All right, I'm going to close the hearing, thank you, sir. The next item that we have is number two on our general docket, it's 357 Meadowbrook Road, map 143, parcel one, addition of Susan Rubin for variance of zoning regulations section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line from thirty feet, currently ten point six feet, proposing thirteen point seven five feet, and section 5.2.5, to increase the total lot coverage, the total floor area, from twenty percent and forty percent, currently twenty five point two nine percent and forty point two percent, proposing twenty five point two nine percent and forty two percent. Permission to construct a one-story screen porch addition over existing deck premises A Zone. Ms. Rubin?
Yes.
Sure, okay.
Hi, I'm Susan Rubin, 357 Meadowbrook Road. I'm asking if you would consider to allow a variance to construct a one-story screen porch over my existing deck, which measures eight feet by twelve feet. The hardship that I have is that I live in a residential A-zone, single-family houses, and the lot size that is required is nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet, and my lot, along with the rest of the homes in the area, is undersized at five thousand one hundred square feet. I am bound by two streets, I'm on the corner of Meadowbrook and Fairview, and all of my neighbors were kind enough to sign the petition, and I hope you will consider my application.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. Is the board have any questions for Ms. Rubin?
Do you have a floor plan? I always get, indeed.
Yes, you know, it's really, you probably are seeing this picture, which is all I have.
Yeah, you don't have a floor plan?
Yeah, my, well, it's just, it's not going to be insulated, it's just trees going over the existing deck and the roof. So, it's not adding any square footage, it's like a kit that's just enclosing it.
Well, it's adding square footage.
Well, yes, but I mean, I'm not adding square footage to the deck. The deck is there, it exists, and it's just screens and a roof that are going up, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Erin.
The staircase that's in the photo?
Yes.
In the picture, does that exist already?
Everything exists. Only the screens and the roof are missing.
Thank you. Anything further, question? Okay, have any other questions? Anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, 357 Meadowbrook Road? Did you have a question?
Just trying to understand why the FAR?
Because it's covered.
Because it's covered now, okay, that's the only difference.
The lot's covered.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone in favor, speak in favor, just to make sure? All right, is there anyone that has an opposition to 357 Meadowbrook? Hearing no other comments, we're going to close the hearing on 357 Meadowbrook. Thank you, Ms. Rubin.
Thank you.
Next item we have is number three, 365 South Benson Road, map 139, parcel 256, petition of Paul Lambert for a variance of zoning regulations section 5.2.4, to reduce the sum of the two sideline setbacks at twenty five feet, currently fifteen point nine feet, proposing eleven point four feet, and section 5.2.4.1, to reduce the rear setback for an open deck from twenty eight feet, proposing twenty seven point five feet, and section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage and total floor area from twenty percent and forty percent, currently twenty six point eight percent and thirty five percent, proposing twenty eight point nine percent and forty six percent. Permission to construct a one-story, a two-story, and second-floor addition with front porch and rear deck premises A-zone. I needed a drink in the middle of that, water, so, long one.
Hello, my name is Paul Lambert, I'm a thirty-five-year resident of Fairfield, and more recently moved to 365 South Benson Road in Fairfield. The reason I am proposing this project is to make my home accessible for my handicapped son. We are looking for changes in the setbacks so that we can install a lift and a ramp to get into the back portion of the house, and then to also widen the front door of the house for an emergency situation. If the lift doesn't work, I can get a portable ramp that can open up and have enough width in the front door to go inside. We're looking to make the first floor more handicapped accessible. In the process, we're going to be widening a bathroom and reconfiguring the bathroom and the kitchen, and then where there is an existing deck, where that deck exists, we're proposing to add a first-floor room closing back to, again, create more accessibility within the house for my son to get around. There's a second phase being proposed, that would simply be a second-floor expansion over the first floor, but that would, since we're in a flood zone, that would have to be in a second phase at a later date. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Board have any questions for Mr. Lambert?
Yep. So, I'm confused, is this application including the second floor or not?
I suppose I should probably try to get approval for the first and the second floor, all at the same time.
So, how many bedrooms? I don't know, you're going to do some?
There are currently three bedrooms.
All on the ground floor, first floor?
Only one on the first floor, two on the second floor currently.
So, when you're all done, you're going to have a four-bedroom house?
We'd have a four-bedroom house, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Lambert? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, 365 South Benson Road? Is there anyone that opposes the application, South Benson Road? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing on 365 South Benson Road. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Next item that we have is number four, 877 Westport Turnpike, map 214, parcel 27, petition of Margaret B. Cutherman, aka Margaret B. Browning, for variance of zoning regulations section 5.2.4, to reduce the side and rear setbacks from thirty feet and fifty feet, currently fourteen point one feet and thirty two point four feet, proposing fourteen point one feet and thirty two point four feet. Permission to rebuild home due to fire damage on the existing footprint premises AAA zone. Attorney Fallon, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for the record, my name is John Fallon, Margaret Browning, Meg Browning is seated in the back, many of you may know her, she's graced these proceedings before, is a very talented designer, and she has owned the home that we are here to talk about here in Fairfield for twenty-eight years. Let me talk about the property, because I said to you in 2016, and I would say again, I don't think I've ever confronted a more likely candidate for hardship than 877 Westport Turnpike. It's located in the residence AAA zone, and it's a most significantly nonconforming parcel with regard to lot area and shape. The minimum lot requirements are two acres, this lot and the FAR, excuse me, the lot square requirement is two hundred square feet. This lot has twenty thousand one hundred and twenty-three square feet, and only a square of one hundred and fifteen. Thus, it's subject to zoning regulations that contemplate a property over four times the size of this property. Not enough, the property is also located in the flood hazard zone. Indeed, if you look at the survey, two thousand seven hundred and nineteen square feet of the property, as shown on the survey, is labeled quote "area underwater." In addition, most of the original improvements, including the house, are located in what is now inland wetlands designated area, and there are also significant steep slopes and rock droppings throughout the property. All of this, in 2016, I think made it an easy decision for this board to grant Ms. Browning numerous variances in order to construct in addition to her existing house. The addition, as approved, accommodated a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home, and provided functional living space for her and her family. The variance granted in 2016 involved street line, side setbacks, rear property line setbacks, as well as variances for lot coverage and building floor area. And as I said, the proper legal basis was found based upon all of these elements of hardship that I discussed a moment ago. In accordance with the approval of the board in 2016, Ms. Browning proceeded with the construction of the addition as approved, which was completed in September of 2018. As you might imagine, if you're familiar with the quality of her work, it was absolutely beautiful. And tragically, and what brings us back to you here, is on April fourteenth, 2023, the home was substantially destroyed by an electrical fire. It's just, and I'll just give you some pictures, these are just a few, these are before and after shots, that give you some idea of the extent of the damage that was occasioned here. So, what we're here to do now is to put Meg back on her feet in terms of restoration of this house. This has obviously been a very, very difficult thing for her, and we do appreciate the board's consideration of this application, because what's before you are the variances that in Schedule A that we need in order to reconstruct the residence on the same foundation and footprint as existed prior to the fire, and consistent with the variances you granted in March of 2016. As shown on the survey, the two-story portion of the house is to remain, but the one-story portion must be rebuilt due to the fire. So, with all of those circumstances, we look at the statute 8S six eight three. One, you have to find that what is proposed is not going to substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan, and two, you must find that there are facts that establish legal hardship as our case law finds it. I cite the Eaton case in my material for the first principle, obviously, if the use of the property is for permitted use in the zone, then that satisfies it. In this case, we are going to use the property consistent with the variances that were granted in 2016, and will not change the use of the property as a single-family residence. The application simply requests permission to restore and rebuild the previously existing structure as you approved in 2016. Meg went to her abutting owners, abutting neighbors, there's not a lot if you know this area here, because it's fairly rural, but as they were in 2016, they are most certainly supportive of this application to allow the reconstruction of her home. The hardship, I won't dwell on the hardship that you found in 2016, but I would point out for the record, it's the same factors that are applicable today. This is a significant pre-existing nonconforming lot as it relates to area and shape, it's located in the flood hazard zone, and the existence of steep rock and slopes and wetlands all provide proper basis for a fighting hardship. Unfortunately, because of the circumstance here, I have to also cite the cases that I do, where our courts have recognized that hardship is established based upon matters that pertain to the impacts of forces of nature and casualty loss. The Overshore Association case, the Myra Whitman case, Founder's Village homeowners' case, the Turok case, all- case, the Turok case all stand for that proposition. So that the fire here itself, from a legal perspective, establishes a proper hardship basis for these variances. So in summary, we appreciate you hearing the application. This has been a difficult period for Margaret. We're gonna move forward and rebuild this beautiful house. That's all we're seeking approval of here is to reconstruct dwelling as previously existing and approved by you, and I think the statutory requirements are satisfied relative to all the factors I referenced, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions if you might want.
Thank you, Tony Fallon. Does the board have any questions? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Eight seventy-seven Westport Turnpike. Is there anyone in opposition to the application? All right. I'm gonna close the hearing on eight seventy-seven Westport Turnpike. Thank you, Tony Fallon.
Thank you.
Our next item we have is number five, three thirty Reef Road, map one-eight-two, parcel three-five-two, petition of Benjamin Twombly for variance zoning regulations section five point two point four point two to reduce the street line setbacks and open front porch from twelve feet, currently nine point four feet, proposing five point seven seven feet. Permission to remove existing landing and stairs and build a new covered front porch and stairs premises B-zone. Stop. Go ahead. I was being quiet again.
We own the property at three thirty Reef Road. It's, we purchased it in December. There was a tenant, and the tenant is in the property now but leaving shortly, so we're renovating for our occupation. We have, we're applying for hardship or a variance for the zoning setbacks so that we can build a deck that basically just connects the two front porches and puts a roof over it, and it's specifically for our autistic son who, so he needs to sit outside and watch traffic, basically. That's what it comes down to. I don't know what else to say.
No?
May I call? Somebody who's more articulate than I am.
You can go up there. Give us your name.
I'm Serena Twombly. I'm Ben Spice, the mom of the child we are speaking of. He is significantly autistic and non-verbal and intellectually disabled. I'm his mother and the BCBA Board Certified Behavior Analyst. He definitely has limited skills and interests, and sitting on a porch and watching cars go by and people just gives him quite a thrill, and it makes him very happy and entertained. And since we're his sole caregivers, my husband and I, this is just a great way for us to be able to alleviate his stress and whatever stresses are on our family throughout the day. And he's a sweetie pie. Would have brought him today, but I don't know if he would have had the patience to sit. It would have been quite a trial, but, you know, I would have brought a toy box or something. Anyway, he's sixteen, and I hope you'll all get to meet him someday. Thank you.
Thank you. The board have any questions for the Twombly's? Go ahead, Harold.
Mr. Twombly, you mentioned about connecting the porches. From the single photo that's online, there's a entrance porch, the one that has them is a porch on the side.
Correct.
How do you envision connecting those two structures?
Okay, so the main entrance to the house is really just a landing. It's a four-foot by five-foot roughly landing that sticks out towards the front of the house. And by the way, it encroaches already on the existing setback quite a bit. It's within a foot or two. I think it actually comes to touch the sidewalk. On the side of the house, there's a porch that's inset into the structure of the house. Today, we would use that for internal space because it's kind of a waste, but it's a ten-foot by six-foot porch with steps coming up from the driveway, and that's the only way to access it. And so what we're considering doing is taking that landing and that side porch and just connecting the two, then putting a roof over it. And that way, the little fella can walk. It creates a walking path, and autistic kids love to walk and walk in circles. And it'll create a path through the house so that he can go through the dining room, porch back through the house, and around and around again, and it settles his nerves. Thank you. Did I answer your question?
Yes. So Mr. Twombly, you have, I looked at it, and you have the front landing, which is just a precast concrete with five steps, right?
Correct.
With the metal rails. Then you have a side landing, which is like the side entrance right next to it.
Correct.
Almost the same thing, just a smaller, a little bit more narrow. You're just connecting those two with the front porch all the way around that corner.
And putting a roof over it.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, but you can tell we've done this before.
Uh, same thing.
I don't have seven copies, unfortunately. We did petition all the neighbors, and we got signatures from twenty-some-odd people saying, yes, this would be a great idea. We also have a picture of what it would look like and another drawing, builder architect here.
We have the drawings as part of the record.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a drawing, and Jane was just showing, Harold, those that we have as part of your record as well.
Okay, good.
But if you want to put your petition in, we can have one, that's fine, as long as it's part of the record. I didn't see it in the packet that I had. Did you submit the signatures?
Oh, okay.
No worries.
Wait for clear instructions.
If I could speak again, we do have a report from a neuropsychologist, Dr. Shaffey, who also recommended and supports this decision to provide Anton with this recreational area.
That letter should be in the file as well.
I see you got a lot more than just the immediate neighbors for signing this.
Well, across the street, behind us.
Behind us.
Left and right.
Left and right.
Up and down the block.
Most people only give us one page. You want two, three, four pages.
Well, that's how you meet people. It's great.
All right.
We're both introverts, so that's quite a challenge for us.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. You can have a seat.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Three thirty Reef? Is there anyone in opposition? Three thirty Reef? All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on three thirty Reef. Thank you both very much. Number six is thirteen twenty-six Post Road, map one-eight-zero, parcel two-two-nine, petition of a curio, a betting on a curio at all for a variance of zoning regulations section thirty point two to reduce the distance between two cafes from one thousand five hundred feet, proposing forty feet. Permission to establish cafe within a spa premises CDD-zone. And who do we have? Oh, okay.
Hello, everyone, members of the board. So my name is Michael Dixon. We reside at seventy-five September Lane in Stratford, Connecticut. We're gonna be opening up Wine and Cheese Day Spa, thirteen thirty, or thirteen twenty-six, also known as on the Post Road. So it's going to be a day spa, first in Connecticut, a day spa that has manicure services, pedicure services, massage therapy, different types of massage therapy, facials as well. And it will have a wine bar, well, a full bar. And so the hardship there is that because of our menu and what we're gonna have, we'll need to have a liquor permit. Well, that liquor permit now, you know, with the variance that's needed, because we're right in front of the Chelsea and fifteen hundred feet away from potentially other establishments, you know, that's the hardship there because that's the permit that we need to have. So, you know, once again, it's a full-service day spa that will have a full bar as well. So at the conclusion of your service, you head over to the zen room or a wine bar, then you can have a drink, margarita, you know, relax with a friend, couples massage, you know, split a bottle of champagne, really a nice environment where you can have relaxation as well as fellowship with a friend.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Board have any questions? Go ahead.
I don't know if this is splitting here, but is this a spa with a cafe, or is this a restaurant that has spas?
Yes, so this would be a full-service day spa that, so when you go into a lot of different spas nowadays, they'll have a little room where you can relax with, you know, some flavored water.
Sure.
Well, substitute the flavored water for wine. So it'll just have that as complementary to what we'll be doing.
Okay. The reason I ask is that this variance stays with the property, so in the future, when you're retired and...
Yeah.
This becomes something else, what is it then? If it's been a, does it remain a spa or does it remain a restaurant? So I'm trying to understand, and maybe you don't know the answer.
Well, yeah, so we have, because it'll be a spa and it'll be applying for a cafe permit, you know, that's what's needed for that location.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the future of how that would impact down the road, that that's what would be needed for us to operate.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the Dixons? All right. Did, did you speak to the Chelsea?
Yes.
I think I saw Mrs. Dixon hand you something.
Yes, so I spoke with the Chelsea. They did sign off on us. We're actually gonna be, you know, collaborating on some things for our grand opening, utilizing them for food. We're not gonna be a full restaurant, but some of our offerings are gonna be charcuterie, cheese plates, veggie platters, fruit platters, things such as that, so quick, you know, prepared food already. However, we are gonna be utilizing them, so, you know, let's say you come for a couples' massage, you know, you relax, have a glass of wine, then head over to the Chelsea for dinner. So we're really looking, I've been partnering up with the managers there, have a meeting with the owners as well to really kind of partner and do some things together.
All right, and just to bring that up, and so we have that for the, for part of the record, that'd be great. I can give it to you.
And then if you'd like, also, these are the services as well as a reflection, basic of the menu there for a file. Have a few other copies as well. I don't have enough for everybody, but...
I think we got some of that in the folder, yeah.
All right, good, just making sure.
Yep, no. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Doesn't mean they're not gonna go there.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Some people don't like going up to the podium. Is anyone in opposition? All right, that's who you're worried about, board.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on thirteen twenty-six Post Road. Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you.
Our next item is number seven. We already took that first out of order. And number eight is one-twenty-four Fieldcrest Road, map seven-seven, parcel two-one-zero, petition of Danielle Beeling for a variance of zoning regulations section five point two point four to reduce the side and some of the two sideline setbacks from seven feet and twenty feet, currently six point nine feet and seventeen point three feet, proposing six point nine feet and seventeen point three feet. Permission to raise the garage roof for additional storage premises A-zone. And it looks like we have someone, is there a builder presenting? Okay.
My name is Donald Beeling of one-twenty-four Fieldcrest Road. My wife and I have owned the home for seventeen years. Reason for this appeal is to change the roofline over the existing garage so it will be in scale with the renovated house. We were unaware of the prior owner built the garage too close to the side lot line, and therefore we inherited the situation. This change will not be accessed from the living space of the home, nor will it be livable space. It will only be used for storage. We believe the change will actually be good for the property and neighborhood because it will create a more normal house, garage arrangement than what currently exists. Thus enhance the curb appeal of the neighborhood. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Beeling. The board have any questions for Mr. Beeling? Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, one-twenty-four Fieldcrest Is there anyone in opposition to one-twenty-four Fieldcrest Road? All right, hearing no comments. I'm gonna close the hearing on one-twenty-four Fieldcrest Road. Thank you, Mr. Beeling. Our next item, number nine, was continued, that's seven eighty-five Riverside. Next take up, number ten, that's three seventy-seven Grassmere Avenue, map one-two-eight, parcel one-six-zero, petition of Lou Chunley for a variance of the zoning regulations section five point two point four to reduce the street line, rear line setbacks from twenty feet and twenty feet, currently ten point eight feet and twenty-five point one feet, proposing thirteen point four feet and eleven point eight feet. Permission to construct a two-story, second-story addition premises B-zone. Mr. Probert, I think?
He's not on, Mr. Chairman.
He was on before.
Yep. I don't see him.
All right, well, maybe we need a bigger screen.
No.
No, it would be the participant list. I was being funny. All right, I'm sure he'll come back on, so let's just move, move ahead. Oh, I thought it was...
I'll let you know when he does.
Tom.
Tom Probert.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'm talking about...
Yeah, the agent is, I mean, the next one, I know he's here, sitting right over there, eleven one-oh-two Marshmere Drive, map one-four-seven, parcel five-six, petition of James and Philip Fitzpatrick for a variance in zoning regulations section six point three point two to allow an attached accessory apartment to exceed the maximum percentage of the primary dwelling from forty percent or one thousand one hundred and six square feet, proposing forty-four percent and one thousand two hundred and twenty-one square feet. Permission to construct a one-story accessory apartment premises A-zone. Becker presenting us? Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Becker of Becker Construction in Fairfield. I'm here today representing Jim and Philip Fitzpatrick of one-oh-two Marshmere Drive. I started working with the Fitzpatrick's about a year ago discussing how they might be able to create additional living space on the home so that their daughter, son-in-law, and now, within about a week, the second child's gonna be born, so a family of four would move into the existing dwelling, and that they would have additional space for themselves separate from that. So as I learned more about the ADU, we started discussing that. We actually changed where the original configuration of the property was gonna be, came off the back of the garage with it, as you'll see on the plans. We have built this all at grade. It's gonna be on a slab, so that will get into one of the issues when we run into a little extra square footage. We have also planned this, as I keep talking with them, their plan is to live in this to perpetuity and eternity. I'm trying to think of the right word for it, forever. They do not want to leave there. The kids are gonna move into the house. They will be in the process of buying the house from them, so this will be two families living there as long as they're alive. That's their objective. They are twenty-eight-year residents of Fairfield. Their son already lives in Fairfield. They are Fairfield families. They want the kids in Fairfield to go to school, what have you. So they're working this out. The problem I ran into is as I talked with them further about the layout of the structure, as many times happens in remodels and things, the space started growing, but more so, it grew because I felt that they should make this, not necessarily ADA compliant, but with the mindset of what happens as you age and the potential things, literally up to the point, what if you were in a wheelchair and you want to be in there, and how are you gonna move around in this space and what have you? So we have created, you know, adequate space, not only for them to live today with reasonable amount of furniture, storage, you know, they will be separate from the main house and, but, you know, the thought, like going into doorways and stuff, so everything has plenty of room, literally for wheelchairs, thirty-six-inch doors going in throughout, what have you. So the snafu came in because they have a very large lot on Marshmere for an A-zone, footage, square footage-wise, over half an acre. A reasonably modest, reasonable-sized home, but certainly on Marshmere is not excessive, but we ran into the forty percent limit of the existing total square footage when we went to do with the final desired footprint of the house. So we're needing an adjustment of a hundred and fifteen square feet we're over. If you look at the lot coverage and everything, even with the addition, this property is way under A-zone for coverages. And I do have, I didn't, I don't have the twenty, that's the Twombly's... And I do have, um, I didn't, I don't have the twenties, that's the twomly's hat, but I, I think they went to the whole mailing list. I have thirteen, uh, neighbors that, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick went around and talked to, uh, and have signed off on the affidavits, so I do have that for you.
Great, thank you.
Want that now or you wanna?
Yeah, you could give us that now.
Okay.
And then while we're getting that, and then we think of some questions. No question? No? Thank you. What's that?
That's the original, so, and I, there's a bunch of, I made ten copies, so.
All right, great. And, uh, so, board, have any questions, Mr. Becker?
Yes. Hypothetically?
Yes.
Could you increase the size of the primary residence in order to get it big enough because I know what you wanna build is the...
I thought about that. Uh, it's, they're actually trying not to do it with this, because we came off the garage, so you would literally be putting an addition on the house, and they're trying to keep the house, um, actually, I'm talking with them about some things I think they're gonna try to do for the daughter before the kids move in, that makes sense, you know, stuff like that, but without going and literally running the budget way up. I mean, as it is, it's a decent size investment for them, you know, we're, the way we're doing it. I thought about that, like as a backend situation, you know, what could you do? But they're not looking, I mean, for the kids, this is wonderful, they're coming out of a condominium with babies, you know, so this is great, they've, you know, yeah. But, you know, again, if you look at the house, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's only three-bedroom bath and a half only, I mean, it's a nice house, but, you know, it's only a three-bedroom bath and a half, and on Marshmere, um, there's, like, that across the street, I mean, you know, you have the two children, have the houses up there, big houses and what have you down there, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There are no other questions? Anyone wish to speak in favor of the application, one oh two Marshmere? Is there anyone opposed? One oh two Marshmere? All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on one oh two Marshall. Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Thank you.
But your question hit it. Uh, going back to number ten, uh, I have to call it again, sorry, folks, uh, three seventy-seven Grassmere Avenue, map one two eight, parcel one six zero, petition of Lou Chinley for variance of the zoning regulations, section five point two point four, to reduce the street line and rear line setbacks of twenty feet and twenty feet, currently ten point eight feet and twenty-five point one feet, proposing thirteen point four feet and eleven point eight feet. Permission to construct a second story, two-story and second floor addition, premises B zone. Mr. Probert, sorry, we missed ya a moment ago?
I'm here.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Wow. Okay, uh, you have to, you have to mute one of the, are you using two, uh, a phone and a laptop?
Yeah.
If you are, you have to mute one of them and turn the volume down on that same one that you muted. Did you understand that? Is he on the phone too?
No, he muted his phone.
No, you, you...
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Oh. This is crazy.
Is, is he, is he on a phone end? Who's on the phone?
I'm on the phone because my computer audio isn't working.
Okay.
You gotta turn the computer off then. Well, then, well, you gotta, you gotta turn the auto, oh, there you go. See ya.
Can you hear it now?
He's gone.
He's gone? I thought he was on the phone.
He was. He's supposed to mute the computer, not turn it off. Especially for the engineers.
All right, give him a second. Who's, who's, who's the phone in the middle?
Uh, you know, that's a good question. Not sure. Not him.
That would make sense if he was, if he had the phone.
Yeah. It used to be caller five, now it's caller six.
Yeah, he, he was on the phone in the, in the laptop, and he left the laptop on.
Okay.
Well...
I mean, like, how long you take, Mr. Probert?
Oh, wow. On that point, Mr. Jacoby has some expertise in this kind of a matter if you wanna...
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello.
There we go, all right.
Okay, sorry, I had to hang up and call back, I apologize. I was having trouble with my computer audio and video. Um, I've, I've Zoom meet, have had Zoom meetings a hundred times, uh, this is the first time with WebEx, and for some reason, my browser is not letting me share my audio and video. So, okay, are...
All right, so tell us, tell us about three seven seven Grassmere.
Okay, now, I'm not P and Z, I'm structural engineering, um, our P and Z guy could not make it, so forgive me if I don't present, uh, all that properly. Now, I did the plans for this building, um, the issue here and the hardship we're going for is the fact that a single car garage exits right onto Grassmere Ave, directly perpendicular to the, um, the street, uh, the traffic light, and it's, uh, actually dangerous, um, it's a, it's a dangerous exiting and entering. And what we proposed is to bring the, um, garage around back, which would now encroach on the setback slightly, um, and that was, that was the main issue of the house.
Yeah, so just bring it across from, uh, the Home Depot entrance, the traffic light there, uh, behind it.
That is correct.
All right. Board, have any questions? For Mr. Probert?
No.
Excuse me?
I, I'm asking everyone, anyone here if they have any questions for you, sir? This is Kevin Coyne.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you.
All right. All right, no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Three seven seven Grassmere? Is there anyone that opposes this application, three seven seven Grassmere? All right, it took you three times as long to sign on than the hearing, uh, Mr. Probert. Uh, we're gonna close the hearing now, I'm sorry, it took, it was so hard.
No worries, I'm, I'm kind of embarrassed, like I said, I've done many Zoom meetings, but, uh, this is, this is a little difficult. Okay, so, um, what, where do we stand and what do we do from here?
Uh, you can hang on and mute and then wait until we go to our public, uh, when we talk about each matter, and we'll be voting on each matter in probably, depends how long Attorney Gumper goes, but it probably is twenty minutes or thirty minutes we'll be voting and discussing all the matters. Okay? I'm closing the hearing on your...
My phone's plugged in, my phone is plugged in, I'll wait to hear from you, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Next item, number twelve, uh, two zero six Catamount Road, map two one seven, parcel twenty-two A's in Apple, petition of Robert Joseph and Cara Keely, Jack Jacoby, sorry, uh, for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point four, to reduce the side setback from thirty feet, currently twenty-nine point eight feet, proposing twenty-three point seven feet to the house and thirteen point three feet to open porch. Permission to construct a one, two-story addition and new front open porch, premises triple A zone. Attorney Gumper, go ahead.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, I am Kevin Gumper, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hollahan, Gumper and Dowling at, uh, two 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 eight Black Rock Turnpike here in Fairfield, and I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, uh, Robert Jacoby, who is here along with his wife, uh, Cara Keely Jacoby. The Jacobys has recently bought a property on, uh, two oh six Catamount, they bought that in, uh, April of this year, and the, that how, that property is improved presently with a very small, quite old and dilapidated, uh, building, house, which they wish to renovate and, uh, use for themselves and their two children who are ages six, uh, uh, excuse me, ages two and six months. I have a couple of handouts for the commission here, let me start out with that. For, well, before I begin, I'll show you, the, the property here is large, it's more, well, more than six acres, most of it is unusable, the house itself is stuck down here in this corner, right here, and I will show you a little more here. Have this, but this will be, that is actually part of the plan that was submitted already, but this will just be in front of you, you can see, kinda see what we're doing here. But I'll flip them through a thousand pieces of paper. Go, I've got those plans too, all in there, smaller as you want, go. The propos, the house, as you can see from the top sheet that I gave you, is presently located twenty-nine point eight feet from the, uh, line, and the proposal here is to build a foyer, add a porch, and then add stairs that will, um, project into the setback area, which in this zone is thirty feet. Now, if I were you, the first thing I would say is, this house, why is the front of the house, why is that a sideline setback? Well, it's because there is no street line here. And in, uh, under our Fairfield regulations, uh, if a setback line is not a street line and it is not a rear line, it is a sideline. So that is, in this zone, it is thirty feet. The next thing I would wanna know is, how, how did this house get stuck in the corner of such a huge lot? And I will, I'll get there in a minute, but first, I would like you to flip open, you can see, here's a picture of the side of the house that is where we propose to do the work. And the next picture is, if you can believe it or not, this is basically the front door of the house. The next picture is a door and a stairway off the east side of the house, which is not reachable really from the driveway, it, you'd have to go all the way around the house to get into this entrance. Then just... The next picture is a view, actually, I had these mixed up. Yes, okay, this is a view, if you were standing where we propose to put this addition, looking towards Catamount. You can see this, it's all trees and everything. And then the next picture is a view from Catamount towards the house. Yeah, the house, if you had a microscope, you could probably see it, again, it is completely screened by trees. Now, those trees are in a wetland area, those trees are going to remain. I have, the, the, uh, you can see then the floor plan that we, or actually, the next thing is an elevation of the south side of the house, showing what it is that they propose, what they're proposing to do here, they're proposing this, add the second story here, as you can see, right here, that will replace what is now basically a carport and front entrance, and then build a new entrance right here, in the middle of the south side of the house. And so you can see from, if you go back to the front, the first sheet, you'd be able to come into the garage or walk or, and go into the house that way, or you could walk around the garage, go to the front porch, front steps, up the steps into the porch. Now, there's considerable amount of steps there because the en, this is a split-level house, and the entry is going to be into the second, the upper level of the house. And the reason for that is, the house na, as it now exists, you can, see, do I have those here? You look at the plans which are attached here. You can see that the lower level, which is the same level, the lower level, is the same level that the garage is on, it presently has the kitchen and the dining room, and then that's almost there, and then you go upstairs to the second floor, which has a couple of bedrooms and, uh, an existing great room. This house was built in nineteen fifty-seven, it was used for just about, almost exactly fifty years by a couple of ladies who barely used it as just a woodsy getaway. It's very modest, very small, uh, it's in what you might say interesting condition, it, uh, requires almost a total gut and rehab, which is what, uh, the, um, Jacoby's prepare to do, and the house itself is quite deteriorated and has been that way for some time. I have, also with me, I have petitions from the neighbors, and not only petitions, but three of the neighbors actually wrote letters in support. So, here's the originals from you. Here's the count, we share. And I'm just, um, you can see that in the yellow is the, uh, subject property, and everything that's in red are people that have signed petition, and, uh, the one that, the one that's neither yellow nor red nor white, but's crosshatched, that's owned by Mr. Jacoby, so that's why he didn't sign a petition, it's, it's the same owner, but it's an extra lot that went with the subject lot. And you can see that there is one neighbor who did not sign, and then I understand, I've seen that, uh, that Mrs. Cop, she, uh, Ms. Cop has objected, and, um, I know, as the chairman said earlier, the board likes people to work out their problems before coming here, I agree, so do the Jacobys, they've been unable to make any kind of significant contact with, uh, Mrs. Cop, even though she sold them the house. They've called, written, and emailed and had, no, they weren't able to call because they didn't have a phone number, they emailed several times, wrote to her, and heard nothing whatever directly from her, did not hear anything at all actually until she filed a notice directly with you, but didn't have the courtesy of sending it to the, uh, Jacoby's. So, um, I'm gonna ask you to take another look at the first packet I gave you, and you will see... You'll see, I wanna go through a little bit this, but there's several, there's a couple of maps in here, and the first map's come to, way reduced, little short one, this is what the property looked like in nineteen fifty-one, when it was surveyed, was sold as this, as is, in nineteen fifty-one, uh, in nineteen fifty-three, to people named, um, Morris. Flipping page, and the next thing you see is a subdivision that the Morris's did in nineteen sixty-four, made a three-lot subdivision. Um, Mr. Jacoby is the owner of lot three, which is the big lot at the top, Ms. Cop is still the owner of lot number two, which is at the bottom, and lot number one is now owned by Mr. Worthington, who wrote a letter in support, a Dr. Worthington, who wrote a letter in support. Interesting, this was, uh, subdivision, you can do the subdivision today, these, uh, two bottom lots, one and two, they do not comply, uh, they both, uh, have inadequate square and, uh, inadequate frontage, and in addition, lot number two, owned by Ms. Cop, has, uh, inadequate size. But it was done in nineteen sixty-four, at which point it apparently was legal, it's done by Andrew Huntington, and Andrew Huntington knew the zoning letters, knew the zoning regulations better than almost anybody else, 'cause I think he actually wrote them. And when you wanna know, why is the house stuck in the corner? This is a strange thing that, in this case, this is not the situation where the house was, uh, put in the corner of the lot, and the... was, uh, put in the corner of the lot, and the, uh, setbacks were made so the house would fit. It's quite the opposite. The lots were designed so that, the house was here first, so the, uh, lots were designed to provide what was the then required setback from this house. It was actually off by two and a half inches, but, so it's twenty-nine point eight feet instead of thirty feet. That is how we got to the, uh, situation we're at today. You look at the next piece of paper, it's right here, and this is done by Bill Kenny, who's a soil scientist, and he mapped the wetlands. And this shows lot number two, lot number two, lot number three owned by the Jacobis, and also the additional lot owned by the Jacobis, and all this yellow with green is wetlands, which indicates the problems that you have in building on this property. So, it would be difficult to build in this upland here, because you'd have to cross the wetland. You couldn't build in the wetland. Again, you couldn't build up here because you wouldn't have any setback, you wouldn't have the necessary setbacks from up here, up here. So you would be, this is the only place the house can go, and it is very tight, both against the setbacks and the, um, the wetlands. So no matter what's done here, it will need wetland approval, because it's all in a regulated area, although it's not necessarily in the wetland. The, um, Jacobis did go around to all their neighbors, Mr. Jacoby, you can tell. I mean, how much time did you spend?
Um, I don't, I don't know how many exactly, but it, it must have been at least, at least ten surrounding. We, we also got, asked the neighbors that touched the other lot, even though it's not touching two oh six Catamount, um, and they were all, they were all excited that this house has been neglected for so long, that we could, we could do something, as Mr. Gruber said, it's, it's small as it stands, and, um, you know, and I think it was about a month, and I spent probably forty-five minutes on average with every single neighbor, showing the plan, showing the survey, asking if they had any objections, and, um, and that's how we ended today.
And, oh, we know that, um, Ms. Cop, I don't know whether it's Mr. or Mrs. Cops, I'll call her Ms. Cop, uh, did write a letter saying that, uh, she objected, and, uh, based on that, we, we did a little, I, the next page after the Bill Kenny wetlands is a very reduced map that she filed, uh, to get wetlands approval, and she proposes to build a house right down here close to Catamount Road. Now, why is that familiar, uh, why is that significant? Because it shows the proposed location of the house. It's probably the only place on her lot where a house can be built. There is a significant wetland between, uh, where her house could be and where the Jacoby's house is. As I showed you from the pictures, that's a heavily wooded area. Because it's a woodland, it can't, I mean, because it's a wetland, it really can't be disturbed, it's gonna remain more or less that way. And you can also see on that that there is an artesian well, it's a tiny little print right in the middle of the lot, and that well actually is the well for the Jacoby property. So that would, again, be another, uh, reasonable way, nothing can be built up front here. Um, just a few numbers, the Jacoby house is, as it now stands, is about four hundred and fifty feet from, uh, Catamount Road, and it is now about three hundred and thirty fi, there's about a three hundred and thirty-five foot dis, distance from the back of, um, the proposed Cop House to the existing Jacoby House. And if this were granted, we'd be down to about three hundred and nineteen feet between houses, uh, between the front of, between the back of the Cop House and the new stairs into the Jacoby House. And that three hundred and nineteen feet would include a, um, as, as mentioned about four times already, a large wetland that is heavily overgrown and wooded, and that there'll be considerable privacy and protection, uh, from any neighborly interference between the two houses. Um, now, you know, of course, that you are the zoning board of appeals, and that you have the, by statute, the ability to vary the application of the zoning regulations in harmony with their general purpose. In this case, the general purpose is to have single-family residences in the triple-A zone, which is what is proposed to be had here. Um, and, uh, with due consideration for conserving the public health, safety, convenience, welfare, and property values, you have several letters from the neighbors saying that they believe that this proposal by the Jacobis will in fact increase the, um, their property values, and, um, we're owing to conditions especially affecting such parcel, but not affecting generally a district in which it is situated, and we have those situ, uh, those, uh, requirements, since we have only the, the way the lots were drawn out, that you only have the thirty feet, which is much too, doesn't make any sense in a property of this size that was na, like, eight acres in, um, time to draw the lot to was only thirty feet, but that's the way it was done. And, um, it wa, it is an exceptionally difficult or unusual hardship, uh, would be cost to them if they can't build it. What, uh, now, I also know that Ms. Ms. Cop said that, uh, she sent something into the board, saying that she had a plan that didn't require any kind of, uh, uh, waiver, and that might have been adequate for her, but the problem with that plan is it would cut through the proposed dining area, it moves the kitchen to a different floor, so it causes a completely different, um, layout of the house, which would make it pretty much unusable, uh, or not unusable, but really not fit for the purposes for which, uh, the Jacobis want, uh, which is to keep the dining room, the kitchen downstairs, step up to the, uh, to the, uh, living room, or in great room, and the, uh, room for the children to have play in, and then also adding a major, or a master suite, or, I'm sorry, not a master suite, a primary, excuse me, a primary suite, uh, that would, uh, which is pretty much typical in this general neighborhood. So that is, is this any, uh, seems to be about it. I think, uh, I see that Mr. Greenwood is actually, Christopher, Attorney Christopher Greenwood is Mrs. Jacoby's father. I don't know that he wants to be heard, uh, and I see that Ms. Cop is on there, and I will wait for her comments. Or first, does the board have any questions?
Uh, do we have any questions?
Yes. So access to this property, is there a, is there an easement now?
Yeah.
Ms. Cop?
No.
So how does we get, what is that all about?
I will show you. Well, I guess actually it is. It is. Here. Right, it does actually, it does go through Ms. Cop for a bit. Mostly it goes through Dr. Worthington's property.
Okay, but is that, is she objecting, or is that illegal easement?
Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
But that's not anything that's gonna be?
No, no, that's, that's been, that's been on the books.
Sixty-four.
Nineteen sixty-four.
Okay, that's it.
Any other que, Harold?
Yes, uh, this is Harold. Uh, so, Ms. Cop lives at the address?
No, no, she doesn't live there. That's an empty house, there's, that's an empty lot.
Lot.
Yeah, she lives in Greenwich, as far as I know.
There is no hu, house there.
There is no house there, there's a proposed house, which is what I, I gave you.
I understand, okay.
You see that?
Yes.
Okay.
And so the driveway, um, is the sole use of the, uh, elements.
Yes, exactly. The driveway is, is exclusively for the use of lot number three.
Thank you.
By deed, so.
Yeah. Well, they created it, they created a driveway for that lot, right? It's, it's theirs.
Yeah. And there are actually, there's actually an easement that Ms. Cop granted, um, generally around below the, the wetland area, to provide access to the property up here, which, this over here is, is also owned by the Jacobis, so she gave them an easement.
Is that a building lot? That extra lot?
Uh, no. I think that might be part of the.
This land.
Yep. I just, I, I think I went through this a little bit. The house was bought, was, um, the house was built nineteen fifty-seven, was sold in nineteen sixty-four, was used, like, I think for, I would, I would say it was a hunting lodge or a fishing lodge, but that's not quite right, but it's very rural and rustic for fifty years, and, um, then Ms. Cop bought the property, the, this property, the property she retains, plus property to the side, all in two thousand and fourteen. I don't know this for a fact, but I believe that she wanted to put in three lots, and was unable to do so, because there's no access to this one. So, uh, she then kind of sold one lot to Mr. Jacoby, and I think is hoping to eventually build and sell on the front lot. She got a wetlands permit, and that permit has been, is subsequent appeal, which is pending in the Superior Court, so it's not ready to go yet.
Any other questions, Attorney Gruber? All right. Let's, uh, open it up to see if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, two zero six Catamount Road. First, anyone here at Town Hall? Are anyone remote, want to speak in favor? Is there someone remote that wishes to speak in favor?
Yes, I, I'm Attorney Chris Greenwood. I actually am chair as a other, and I'm an attorney in, in Trumbull. I, I just want to point out also to the board, and I think Attorney Gruber touched on it, that there are multiple easements. There's an easement going across the north part of Ms. Cop's property, a fifteen-foot easement, that also comes from that northerly border, so when you're talking about thirty foot setback, there's, in addition to that, there's another fifteen-foot easement to access that back, a lot that's not a building lot. So, and that's a easement for construction trucks to go back if they ever decide to put a, uh, pool in, or something along those lines, and just, I, I think Tara and Rob and myself were a little shocked yesterday when Attorney Gruber let them know that there was an opposition from Ms. Cop, because I never let, believe there would ever be any, any issue with, uh, building. Um, and I think Ms. Cop knew, at least her attorney did, because I never spoke with her, but her attorney knew that obviously we, Tara and Rob were gonna go back and put major renovations into that house. That was being sold as is, but with the intention that people would be going in and redoing that complete house, because it's a, it's a complete gut job, and, um, if anything, it's gonna make that area of, that area to be very beneficial to it. It's, it's, plans are beautiful, and I, I think we were just kind of shocked that in opposition came, um, and I would just ask the, if you want to please approve it. I think Tara, Rob, and the kids would be a great benefit to the area there in the house as well.
Nice. Thank you, Attorney Greenwood. Uh, is there anyone else in favor of the application remotely? Okay. Uh, next, is there anyone that has opposition comments to two zero six Catamount Road here at Town Hall? All right, is there anyone? Uh, yep, I know, I know. Is there anyone remote? Ms. Cop, I guess? Go ahead.
So, I am Bonnie Cop. I just needed to clarify a couple things I think were misstated. First, I bought, um, the three lots back in twenty twenty-one. During, um, after I bought the three lots, the one thirty, which I sold to the Jacobis, and two oh six, um, I had worked on getting planning permission to, um, renovate it, um, and that was done in two thousand and twenty-one. At no point was I, did I ever try to build three lots, or subdivide it, or do anything differently than what was available to me at that time. Um, also, I never received any correspondence from the Jacobis, ever. They had my lawyer's email when we did the transaction for the sale and purchase of the property. They had the broker's telephone number and email address, and, um, they might not have had my telephone number, but they had my email address. I never received anything from them, until yesterday. It came in at one seventeen PM. I didn't see it until late last night, saying, you know, "I hope you're well," is basically two sentences saying, "Can you please contact me immediately?" It's a tiny little email. I got it, yes, I saw it last night, and it probably emailed it after I sent the, the, after I sent the email to you, saying, "I'm objecting." So, that's not true. They had plenty of ways to get hold of me, and no one ever received any correspondence from them. And I would have been happy to deal with them and try to work something out with them, but I never even knew this was happening. So that's, those are the first two things I need to clarify. In this letter I wrote with an attachment, um, I don't see the hardship. I went to great extent and great cost to try to keep everything that they're doing within the, um, current setbacks. There is a separate entrance, there is a two-car garage with a master bedroom and bathroom built above the enclosed two-car garage, and an enclosed entranceway next to the garage, all keeping within the setbacks, and no variance required. And it's a, and if you look at the interior plans of the building, it's completely rational and a good flow, and works pretty much for most families. It doesn't work specifically for their needs, and I didn't, and I didn't think that, I think they're a pretty normal family, from what I understand, I mean, that they don't have any special needs. It would work totally fine for them, and they're placing, they also want to place the entrance so it faces what will eventually be a house that I want to build and have and downsize into, in Fairfield. So, um, I don't want their entrance and all their traffic going on that side of the property. I granted many easements in order to accommodate all their requests, with an additional cost to me and my legal fees, basically continuing to do all these easements for them to accommodate the, what, their access to that unbuildable lot, the one thirty Catamount Road. And in fact, I have another easement that they asked me for before the closing right here, that says, um, "I'm gonna give them another hun, fifteen feet around the building so that they can get access to one thirty, um, to the, you know, that flag light in the back." And I'm wondering now if that's because they wanted, they wanted to build an entrance that they never told me about on that southerly side of the building, so that they could have this extra flow? And it had nothing to do with utilizing it during construction of the back lot at one thirty for construction fields and equipment access? I, I'm just kind of, I, I went to this, all this, all this expense and hard work to try to get everything to fit in the, in, in the setbacks, so this wouldn't happen. And now here it is, it's happened. Um, there isn't really, there's no hardship being shown here. They just want to pull up this other entrance on using, using the setbacks, which are required, facing the empty lot. I'm just, I'm objecting to this. There's, it's unnecessary. You can see the plans, it's unnecessary. They bought the building, they bought the planning permission from me, I gave them the entire set of plans, they have everything, they knew what they were getting, and no variances were required. Now they're asking for a variance that is impactive on me and the, and the building that I want to build. Um, and also, the last thing that I mentioned in this letter is that they're increasing the square footage from what was originally built, or that I was approved for, and they didn't make any changes to the drainage, because I had to put in a quite extensive drainage system to take all the water for the square footage of that building, and now they're increasing the amount of surface area, um, for that building, and they haven't made any accommodation for that in the, in the drainage. I'm not even sure if an engineer looked at it, because I had to put in call tech systems for that, to take the water flow. Now that, now the building's gonna be even bigger with more surface area. They've increased the garage size, and they've also added the, um, the, where they want to put that new front entrance that, that comes into my property. Do you have any questions?
I got that. I was about to ask others. Are you done, Ms. Cop? I just, I didn't want to cut you off.
Nope, that's.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Uh, is there anyone else? I had to see this other, anyone else? Anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Two oh six Catamount? Okay, all right, I turn it back to Attorney Gumper and to rebut. You covered on some of the comments in your presentation, but let's just have your rebuttal as to the hardship and not butt back and forth about what was sent, about, we know she opposed and we know that there was at least some contact because she sent in an email. So I don't want to hear anything about it back and forth, I want to hear the facts that we need to consider.
All right. Well, just for the one thing, here in the, you'll see on your plan, in the green, is the new drainage calculation, so it, it.
And you know that we don't, we don't, we don't do anything with drainage, so I don't want to hear about drainage. It is a variance of the law, okay? And the rules apply to that. You got to deal with a different section of this town, Ms. Cop. You got to deal with a different section of this town for drainage, not the ZBA. I make my opening comments clear for a reason, the attorneys know that and the people that have been here know that. ZBA, zoning board of appeals, regulations, variance to the lot. I don't do traffic, I don't do, we don't do sanitary here, we don't do plumbing, we don't, we don't do electric, we don't do anything but that. All right, go ahead.
All right. The, the way the house sits on, the hardship here is there's really nothing else you can, nowhere else you can put the house. You have to deal basically with what you have. The, there is no real front door to the house now. It would be possible to put a front door in a different place. It would seriously impair the lowest level of the property, I mean, of the, the lowest level of the, of the house, because it would go, the, the entrance would go through what the Jacobies were hoping to use for their dining area. That is why they don't want to go forward with this. The kitchen would be moved to a different floor at considerable expense and the kitchen's presently on the, the ground floor. They would like to keep the kitchen on the ground floor, they would like to keep the dining area next to the kitchen, which makes sense. Ms. Cop did have a plan, it probably worked for her, didn't work for the Jacobies. The hardship is, there's nothing, there's, you need a, a proper entrance to any house in town, there is no proper entrance here and this is the way that makes the most sense. And as we've said, I, I don't see any real problem. It's, I don't see how it's going to affect her in the slightest, but of course, she's entitled to her opinion.
That's it?
I think that's it.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, Attorney Gumper, for following my request and narrowing the rebuttal to what concerns us. And now I'm going to close the hearing on two oh six Catamount Road, we'll be taking that up at the end of our working session because it'll be the last one. Our next item, number thirteen, three oh nine Hinady Avenue, that was continued to next month. So we're closing the public hearing. We're going to take ten minutes and will we return to vote on all of these matters? Okay, I'll call back to order, Town Fairfield, zoning board of appeals, June eighth, two thousand twenty-three, working session as to the matters that went forward today. The first item that we had go forward today, well, we're going to go in the order of the agenda. So the first item we're going to take up today is going to be six eighty Old Academy Road. Attorney Fallon presented this and it's to reestablish a separate rear building lot. And we have on, on this, where is it? Yeah, there we go. Like to entertain a motion to approve with the following conditions that were presented by Attorney Fallon, agreed to with a neighbor and they're in a, a letter from Attorney Green of June eighth, two thousand twenty-three, but entertain a motion to approve with the conditions that the premises at six eighty Old Academy Road are used for single-family residence and accessory garage structure as shown in the plan supporting the application, that no additional structures of any kind shall be constructed on the subject property, which is that back lot, and that the existing structure upon the subject property may be repaired and/or replaced, but no repair replacement shall result in the expansion or enlargement of the structure, including but not limited to any increase in building coverage or building heights as defined in the zoning regulations. With that condition, as presented and agreed to by the applicant, entertain a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Okay, well, there you go. All right, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. And discussion? Don't be shy. You usually help me out and start the discussion.
I mean, that's, that building in the back is, is currently a garage with a residence above is very, four thousand square feet now? Is that what we said? Whatever it is, whatever it is, it's the size of a single-family house, so it's reasonable to impose a condition, yeah.
Which would be up to four thousand, because the, as Attorney Fallon indicated, the main structure, if it wasn't approved. So it's under that because going up to four thousand is, it may be enlarged.
Right, so my, my point is that though that existing building is, with this condition, it's a reasonable ask, a reasonable condition, because it is the size of a single-family house, that's all. It's not imposing any terrible condition to it.
I would agree.
All right, any other discussion? All right, bring it to a vote, the order we use?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. That's approved. Our first item is eight fifty-seven Hillside Road. Mr. Morales presented his own application, is to construct a rear story addition, entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Terry, is there a second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane, discussion?
Modest addition to a modest house.
Yeah, yeah. Supposed to have eighty-seven thousand square feet in the lot and they have fifteen thousand.
Right.
And they have wetlands to deal with.
Right.
So it's a hardship. Bring it to a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Next item, number two on our regular docket, is three fifty-seven Meadowbrook. Susan Rubin, she presented her own application and she wants to do a one-story screened porch over her existing deck. Entertain a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Terry got that one, Harold, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Discussion?
It's going to be a screened porch on, over an existing deck, but Mr. Decker, Mr. Decker?
Sorry?
This is Meadowbrook where she wants to turn, put a screened porch on top of a deck?
Yes.
And that increase, increases coverage.
No.
Of FAR.
FAR, yes.
In the future, could that be turned into a conditioned space part of the house without any additional variance?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Points on this, you got ninety-three hundred, ninety-three, nine thousand three hundred fifty-seven square feet required, they have five thousand one hundred. So at two percent, we're not, even if they did that, your point is taken, even if they did that, it's not, it's not crazy.
I agree, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Number three, three sixty-five South Benson Road, Mr. Lambert presented his application, construct a one-story, two-story and a second-floor addition with front porch and rear deck. Entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, discussion? Yeah, small, we have a small cape in this area, again, ninety-three seventy-five and they have forty-eight hundred. So when you look at the percentage, it's not, not a lot near for the neighborhood.
Right, and when you look at.
Sternal porch.
The design of it, it, in keeping with the texture and size and scale of the neighborhood.
Bring it to a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Number four, eight seventy-seven Westport Turnpike, Attorney Fallon presented this, Ms. Browning, entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Terry, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Harold, discussion? Well, I've been here a long time, so I remember when this was, it's approved.
No change.
Yeah, and I, I looked at the house, I know I bought the house early on and I didn't because of the hardships that are, for this property, I'm building it and doing it additionally. So I applaud the efforts and I think it's, it's very reasonable. Need a vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Number five, three thirty Reef Road, Mr. Trombley, they presented their application together and to remove the existing landing and stairs, there's two of them, and build a new covered front porch and stairs. Entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Jane, you got that? Is there a second? Thank you, Katie. All right, discussion?
So this and the, the application to back, they were both presented with family requirements, but those are not hardships. However, in this situation, the hardship is absolutely tied to the property and I'm a hundred percent in favor of that.
Also, there was much support from the neighbors.
Yes.
So there's no negative impact to that perceived by the neighbors.
And a lot of the houses down on me, they, they want to have those nice front porches too.
Oh, yeah.
They all, oh, want to see who's going to the beach. Be a busy, busy road if they occupy and watch. Bring it to a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Number six, thirteen twenty-six Post Road, the Dixons presented this, they want, they need, want to establish a cafe, so they need a variance relative to the fifteen hundred foot separation rule. Entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Terry, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Harold. All right, discussion?
I'm in favor of this, but I still don't understand if this is a spa with a bar or a bar with a spa, if it makes a difference, Mr. Decker, does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter?
I think it's, depends on which one you use first.
Right. Make it a bar without a spa.
Harold, Harold has hit the nail on the head on that one.
In the future, if it becomes just a spa, will they have to come back for a variance because that is just a spa or is it the way around? No.
Yeah. This is just to get a liquor permit.
Okay.
So we have that fifteen hundred foot separation rule. So bring it to a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. And number seven, number seven, good luck, two twenty-three Doring Drive, petition of the Fermenters, they presented this remotely, Mrs. Ferment did, and it's to construct a two-story second-floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. All right, is it discussion?
With the big wetlands.
Oh, yeah, the big park back there, yeah, it's like.
You can't do anything.
Yeah.
Very lot. And it's a nice design.
All right, vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Number eight, one twenty-four Fieldcrest, Beeling's, Mr. Beeling presented the application to raise your welcome the garage roof, additional, additional storage space, entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. And discussion?
You won't even notice it.
There's no change in the footprint of just raising the roof of the garage, right?
Yeah, that's one of the, the host of those small, small, small garages.
Yes.
You can't even get a golf cart in those, right? Hard to get a golf cart in a second level. Well, you need, you need space. You sit five bikes in there and then you have no storage space. Let's bring it to a vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Number nine, that was continued, that's seven eighty-five Riverside, number ten, three seventy-seven Grassmere Avenue, Chunley, Mr. Probert presented this to construct second store addition, and second floor, second story, two-story second-floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Terry, is there a second?
Jane, second.
Thank you. And this is the Cross from Home Depot changing the garage.
Right, that was just the other addition, that's for the garage.
Yeah.
Totally reasonable. And that's, that's fine.
All right, vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, I say yes, passes. All right, we're at number eleven, one oh two Margemere, Mr. Becker presented this for the Fitzpatrick's to construct a one-story accessory apartment. Entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Harold. And discussion?
Yeah, you need to do.
James, go ahead, like that. And your, your question is what I was writing down just before you asked your question.
Right. Is that permitted actually, Mr. Decker? I mean, is that a way to adapt the regulations to get work?
They could have done that and not leave this variance.
Right.
To get the house over, so forty percent equals one thousand two hundred and twenty-one square feet.
Right.
They have more than enough room.
Right.
They're, even that as builders, they're at only a thirteen percent, well, thirteen point nine, a lot, it's fifteen point seven.
So there's some, some things you need to not incrementally, incrementally add in order to do other things with this here and plan.
Well, incrementally add when you get a variance is different than increment, to get a new variance.
You're fine.
But if you have two.
It would have been a three hundred square foot addition.
Right, right.
Which costs prohibitive, is what, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so let's bring it to a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. And number twelve, two oh six Catamount Road, petition of the Jacobies, Attorney Gumper presented this and they wanted to construct a one- and two-story addition, a new front open porch, entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Terry, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Harold. And remember, we had, you know, we had some support in letters from the neighbors, support on the phone by Attorney Greenwood and then opposition by Ms. Cop also on the record. All right, let's have discussion.
The Jacobies have no obligation to, to build any design that somebody offers to them. It wasn't part of any arrangement or anything, so it's sort of a moot point.
Correct. I, I think that's the concern that Ms. Cop had about the location of the front door, given the fact that her plan for her potential build is over three hundred feet away and there is wetlands and trees in between, there's very little likelihood that the, the, the palace house will even be seen.
Correct. Well, to the hardship, what we have to deal with on the land, the wetlands, they can't move it back.
Can't move it back, yes.
Can't move it back. So you're going to do anything and they're going from point nine percent lot coverage to one percent lot coverage and one percent FAR to one point eight percent FAR. That is not a big build, so it's not like they're trying to max out and then they need the variance for that front. They're doing a very modest build and they can't move it back and hardship is, what I think is, when you, when you have other struc, other things, the topography, like Westport Turnpike, the topography there is huge and the lot size, here we have, we have wetlands, we know we can't go in there. So if they can't move it back and they do even a modest addition, this is the epitome of a hardship and you have this large, large lot, it's not going to be overbuilt, you can't move it back, you do a modest build, it's definitely qualified and it'd be unfair to apply these setbacks to this, this particular property.
Very good.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Oop, I wrote on the wrong one. The last matter was continued, thank you and see anyone that's coming in July.